Okay, so.
What is this, what is this?
Rules. And this is a coach.
Yeah, they, they push through. Hi.
Great.
Yeah, it's pretty much. About three or four months. First, we can check this out. All the way to the first.
This, this one.
I missed you over here. Because we can't snicker now. I get plenty of you. I get plenty.
Oh, there we go.
We're gonna have a slide delay. Our meeting for week four. Of the decade with several of us.
Parking is also pretty tough. That's either good thing or bad. Oval Beach was pretty good this afternoon. Water was perfect. As long as you got. For sure.
But sunny. Uh, Johnny Fox, very Johnny Fox. I know, very Johnny Fox.
Oh, wait a minute. They're talking about younger or older.
The young.
Okay.
So I guess.
Mark.
Molson. And he said, uh, Mr. Molson. Some for July, I forgot. Uh, Mr. Molson used to, uh, ring a bear crew in that. I put on the, my price in. He told us, like, yeah, there's lots of these bear crew out there.
As they believe that it was a British thing, so. And.
A lot of those people come down.
You can see the other side. You don't get blown away.
Only back. Who needs a back? I'm happy to share. Yeah, that's, uh, I should have cleared that when I went. I just. I mean, that would be the reference. Truth, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Because we did, we did open a wifi here. Yeah. It's okay. We're working through this. Thanks, you. Thanks. All the words. You stand. But we could specify the United States of America. We do very well. Saints, one nation, under God, invisible, with a reason, justice for all.
Here, Buster. Ian.
Here.
Peterson. Second.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
All my comments this evening. No comments by the mayor this evening. Roger City Energy Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just from a process standpoint this evening. We do have a closed session item on the agenda tonight. So we're gonna kick you out of the room. If you're not a member of the board and or staff. But we'll let you back in, so usher you downstairs. We'll close the door. It's to discuss a FOIA. Which is a Freedom of Information Request that we have. Just being protested, so. We're in a juggling in a closed session for that. So just a heads up. But it's pretty far on the agenda, so if you're here at this time, it's good for you. City Mayor's report. I guess before I get into that item. Something that we touched base on Wednesday was the fact that. Father Benjamin and I did receive a petition. Related to the forty homes. We had a really good meeting with General Lindsay and Sandra Oger. Very productive meeting. I think the mayor and I were a little bit surprised by the wording of the petition. And that they were asking the city to take no action. And kind of collect their thoughts and put something in place that will adhere to date. While our legal council doesn't think that's the best idea, so that's why I'm just on the agenda tonight. But I do want to recognize that in their efforts and like I said, a very productive meeting. And they're very positive statement. All right. City Mayor's report is in your packet. I do want to highlight two items. Public panels. So Kate White, our intern, took us to study that. She did push out a survey. We're having not the best of luck getting feedback from the retailers. So she was gonna go in person and visit with a number of retail shops, hoping to solicit more input. We think that's important to make our final recommendations to counsel on. What's gonna happen with the public panels. And then she's giving to the social districts, so she's studying that. She's reaching out a number of consultants to kind of solicit input on social districts and what they're doing. How they're designing, et cetera. One of the things that came from council at previous meetings was the fact that we want to kind of create like a social district. Social space for people who go and do things. And so that's what Kate's studying that pretty hard right now. I know the, our place for us also support that idea. Kind of give, give people a destination with their social district. Oval Beach stabbing and operations, so really cool news for Oval Beach. We're getting rid of startable. So we finally have been to compulsive cups. Only thing we can do with compulsive cups for are the hot, uh, sun nuts that didn't melt. So there's still gonna be a little bit of startable out there. I think we're also having issues with hot dogs too, so we're working through it. But the good news is that we're getting rid of a lot of startable out there. Staff was, staffing's been an issue. Nothing new there this year. I did put in some interesting, I find it interesting, some interesting data. Stacking levels kind of versus use of our, of our old beach. You know, one of the metrics that we can actually measure. And it's, you know, revenue for the beaches come up over $200,000 since 2016. And our staff has decreased. It's almost like an inverse relationship. So currently we're at 14 people. We really want to be at about 20. That's, that would prevent staff fatigue and prevent a little bit of overtime. But use has gone up, staffing down. So I mean, it's the same story across the service industry that restaurants and saw that have, having closed local days. They don't want to, but they, they have to. So we're, we're in a more difficult position. You know, the reason I wanted to pull that together was just to kind of make connection for folks that are seeing trash around. And, you know, restings are maintained from low that we would expect. Of course, we want to maintain our property to the best of our abilities and not just break it down. So I just wanted to throw some facts and some data in there.
Okay. Just a quick question. And our strategic planning in the session, we.
Uh, stop, stop. Get back to that. I don't know exactly where we're at. So after, you know, in my report, after another line and like, you know, telling the story. I, I talked about some things that are, I mean, like, right? One is the added U W staff number. And then also checking up wages benefits, right? Something else that supports. We got our intern. Maybe that becomes a full-time administrative support position. Increasing the rates for seasonal employees, which we've done this year. We may have to continue that trend. Outsourcing less technical vacancies, mowing, blowing, weeding, that type of thing. But even still, the companies, they don't have employees either, so it's been really difficult this year. We're kind of flexing outside resources because they just don't have the personnel either in the service industry. Something else that I've studied discussions on with the Aladdin County Sheriff's Department is we're flexing part-time seasonal patrols on Oval Beach. Compared with kind of gateway to, to Oval Beach. So all those things are in process. Additionally, I think that we can do a little better kind of improvement, kind of have a stronger recruitment policy or program. High school, college students. And then also promote volunteerism, which has started already. Oval Beach being an example. Kind of brainstorming idea to have like baskets that people could carry, pick up at Oval Beach, pick up trash. Just things that people are just like, oh, no beach, they can help out the city with. So working on that as some, some awesome. All right. Boost our trail things in there, but I'll leave that to the chair of that committee. Forty homes on the agenda. And a really good meeting with the Z P A chair this morning that we leave a council. Spent two and a half hours going over a number of questions that they have. And I think that at least the chairperson is feeling comfortable with where they're at and where they're going with some of the decisions that are in front of them. Regarding the waterfront development, that's. Rocket servicing, won't go into that. One other thing I should mention is the City Hall office space. So I got connected with an executive at Ernie Miller. Went out, had a nice visit with, he and his team. And they have some really good ideas about renovating our office space, really just kind of deep cluttering. Kind of making it a little more professional, more efficient. Lead time on furniture is like eight months, so it's gonna take a while to hit there. But this, I think, will also give us some time to think about maybe some interior issues that we connected to Sam. I think those should all hand in hand. So, Mr. Mayor, that was my report. Happy to answer the questions. Oh, one other thing. Nice news under the, the whole treatment is also put into the report. I just pushed out to folks that have, uh, are part of the, we have to give some updates. Yeah, brief update on the segment service. We did for the permit application to our legal staff. And so that's a review and we'll do that shortly.
Mayor, I'm, I'm the U T and T violation. Just a request from the, uh, radar station. So they would like to, at some point, we involve the U T and T does come back with a recommendation. Changes and modifications to radar station. Most governor wanted to be here tonight, but wasn't able to. But if, if he could be moved in with, with that, why?
Sure, absolutely. Makes sense.
I have a few questions, Mayor.
Yes.
On the radar size on Allen. Who started?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still waiting on that. I've talked about that last week here for some popular conversation. So. Yeah.
Just one additional item. We are joined by a member of our legal team. We from F D L.
F S B R. National Service Roads.
Coming to us out of Lansing. You're actually.
Yes.
Jake Williams Grand Rapids. I got three or four meetings. And so part of the people representing our citizen. You can call them. Moving on. Any other additions or changes you have of staff?
Um, I'm just actually a team introduction. I guess I can use myself on the boat. Do you have any sort of, we, how's golf, that's part of my business.
Going forward, uh, there's nothing with the agenda that would change that. More people. Yes, speakers. Evening. First person. Of the Fox was. My third report and thought I'd.
This is summer for the fireworks meeting in 19th of July. Is everyone sitting there? Uh, the, the report review, the fire system financials. Chief updated the Twitter board on a number of points delivered. Is ready for all report analysis with same deck as usual. Noted, uh, fire disaster issue in Stan is 72 so far in the group year. In 63 individual fires. Chief Janet also noted to receive a $1,012 grant for plans to examine their inspected classes. And the same sort of very reported that two of his emergency assignment, Wind Vales, Brad Escobal. Have received a firefighter one and firefighter two certifications. And he noted this worth noting. That these certifications require $275 to study often at other fire departments around the area. For which the candidates should see them pay. Let's see what the quality of the people that are on. Chief noted that legal settlement was being under review in the matter of housing detail. Large file township. He reported to the board. That equipment in the department with temporary rumble strips. Discuss. For the improved safety of commercial spine when they're out on 196. Which is the call they dread the most because the danger out there is so great. Cell phones. The rumble strips have shown very technical difficulties. These are over our even place. And trying to get temporary ones means they probably won't be good in place. It's a part of the head with boss up. He also referred to the memorial service for the home. So the, uh, fire chief John Black. Chief also reported the latest accidents just to the old Aladdin. Which are highway intersection. Which is the most dangerous in the district. Fire disaster. With four accidents in just. Prior, the prior month. The fire were discussed ways to try to elevate awareness of this. By context, collective conference, state representatives. However, this is no. Chief noted a significant save in the prior run. In Douglas concerning, uh, some street business over there with serious natural gas leak. Result of. Fireboard unanimously related all four firms serving fireboard offices. Plan is chair. Eric Beckman as vice chair, which currently is secretary. Staff helps as. And Chief Janet also shared with the board, uh, in my state's coast guard. Notification according to the township, but not directly to the fire district. Of the coast guards intend to consolidate the Holland Coast Guard Station with the Grand Haven Coast Guard Station. Is an act that US Coast Guard responses to underwater emergencies in our region. Either from Grand Haven or Milwaukee. This where reinforced fire disaccompaniment to this smaller water risk.
Awesome questions. Again. Next guest here, the president of the Sheriff's Department. Keep a brief. Say something dumb. The accidents obviously got out, like special action. County on the traffic. Serious accidents that we've been having out there have been down the last week, so. There's been a busy weekend, uh, two managers on, on alcohol. Instances that we're managing. Oh, also, uh, if you're going down the, uh. Fireworks for the September 10th, I just asked consideration of possibly going in the social district. Other than that, um, basically a question. What?
Yeah. I know you guys given a grant for the Marine Patrol to work on the new wake zone. And taking in that area or just warning people to kind of update on, um, number of tickets.
I don't have, I don't have a number, but I, I know that it has been obviously decreased. I drove by last night, some different boats pulled over at the bridge here, so. Within 20 minutes, so I can get those numbers in fast speed for sure.
Yeah, I would love to see, we had a numbers on that. And then I also noticed in town that there have been a number of call cards. That I have a problem with call cards, but I didn't know if, um, is that something that you tick them for? Or do you, are they, are there ones that are road people?
There are, there are a couple of town that you have license plates posted that are licensed. The county did pass the M R B, which, um, yeah. Need the county's case on it, it's not very clear. But if you go about that, players riding man app, it actually will show you the routes and not. So we've had a lot of incidents all across the county of people not knowing and riding, uh, governor tour, any bikes. Any kind of contrivance that you can, uh, think of, uh, know on the area of roads. So I did a progress with expectations to put on. Any other questions? There's none? No, thanks again.
No, I presume we're all there.
Next again, I have a question to do, explore public habit, this is where we invite the public to press counsel. On agenda, I am voting, uh, if you wish to address counsel, please step up to the podium. Identify yourself by name and media residence and limit your hours to three minutes.
Okay, um, yes, Jane Underwood Sockit, many, many years. First of all, I would like to thank the council for taking this situation that we have just out of a very, very, very serious way. It's an area that I'm quite familiar with. And I've attended many meetings regarding it over the years, starting back in fourteen or fifteen. Um, I have been looking into it and we're talking about manufactured homes. Very small, by the way. Um, no. Really, they're just not getting record. Don't we have ordinances here in the city regarding things like that? The amount of space a home should have. Um, you know what? You know, we're gonna get sued. It's happened before, it's going to happen again. And let's look at the ordinances that we have on the books, size of homes. Where they can be. And parking. That corner is a nightmare just now. With cars going to the beach, nobody stops at the stop sign coming down the mobile world. People getting off the ferry, we're having a great season. The ferry is loaded with adults, children, bikes. And might I also throw in a walking path is really needed on parks. It's very something I'm struggling more getting. How's my time, Mark? Check it and watch.
Yeah.
Well, I can go on, having been a teacher for a long time, I think I picked my point across. But thanks to you, council, let's get this done.
Yeah, that's like a third second.
Do you want a hand signal?
Yeah. All right, great, Jake, anyone else?
Anyone else? Come on, Megan.
Well, not I can't.
Okay, Megan's up.
We're a little slow off. My name's Susan Markets, I'm in the Gulf of Fair Street, right across from what we're talking about tonight. And Jane touched on the safety issue and we literally live there all the time, every day. And it is, I I know a while back someone did, I think a study of it, of the traffic, it's so busy there. But they did it in March, I believe it was, when there's no. I I don't still know why they did it then, but if they come over, they can sit in their driveway and see how horrible it is.
They're sitting on your porch. Sit on your porch.
More valuable. Just sit on the porch, right? True, there's lots of traffic in the summer, of course, most of the people are going to the old beach. Sometimes it's backed up so far they're stopped when you're well down there. But I know my neighbors down the street and behind us, everybody has children, that's. And when Jane said it's a safety issue, it really truly is. And they, you know, kids are running down the street. And sometimes they, the cars are zooming around the car. And it's really just very concerning, even moving back out of our driveway. I never know who's gonna be behind me that I don't wanna hit. But that's what I've been stressed most of all. Thank you. Thank you for the work you guys do. Maybe fun, thank you very much. Um, I think if we open this can of worms about a lot, this tragedy come down to our street. It's not gonna stop there. I don't even know if there was a special land news permit that you see, but I think there was one, I don't know how that happened. And why it happened. The character, that site is gonna be destroyed. The safety factor is going to, is going to be accidents and I I I know that that hasn't been been done, but there's going to be. And we really need to look at future of our community on both sides, not just your side, but our side too, because that's going to be destroyed on that. Um, and again, the size of those things. I don't know how they're gonna go on, I think there's gotta be something that has been passed that shouldn't have, and we need to be look at that stuff. So, Jamie.
Yeah, I'd like to also. But there will be a second opportunity if the one is gonna stick around, close the end of the meeting where, uh, where I can address counsel. That opportunity to recover any fabric of that he wants to. Moving on, closing some of the common portion of the meeting, we have some agenda. Uh, we have set agenda receiving motion regarding approval of minutes from regular meeting in July, qualify on special meeting platform first.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the regular city council meeting is July twelfth, and the special city council meeting is July twenty-first at ten.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I believe that July twelfth meeting was a very good.
Yes, in the distance, oh, special or?
Okay, I'll check into it. And I also, I think we already had John Box move. I was on the air, so excellent job.
See, you're also a question on each point to just. Yeah. Prove by the.
Changes.
So second, second sort of motion, but there's been a second. Need to prove the minutes with. All those in favor of motion, say yes. Both, and both, carry. Uh, moving on. Uh, next order of business of approval, the council table. Yes. For sixty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, please note that over three hundred eighty-two thousand of that money are some tax portion. And the majority, majority of that goes to either the school, local school district, um, the county and state of Michigan. I mean, it should be wrote down on the last page, the council payable to seven oh one on choice of the actual tax dollars that just passed through.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick question, the Ottawa area intermediate school district, is that?
That's still local, no, that's the local intermediate school district that Sockit schools in, it's in Ottawa, it's Ottawa, I S D.
Okay, so then now it says Sockit Public Schools.
That's the local district, high school, middle school, public school here.
Okay, so basically it's going to the same. Thoughts?
Well, no, it's kind of two different districts.
Okay.
It's kind of like a local district and a county district that lays over top of us. Point, point of information, a year ago when people at school, in the, uh, Sockit and Hamilton, not to join Idaho County, St. Val. Uh, apparently the districts had, had an option to, to choose what district they wanted. Probably a lot of services, real line of tech, a lot of financial services, a lot of administrative.
Thank you.
Our headquarters are up on Port Sheldon in West Pacific. Anything to add or questions, council? Okay, so we have motion in a second, all those in favor of the motion, say yes. Yes, yes, both, none of those, so carry. Moving on, we have no unfinished business this evening, I have thirteen A, new business, consider approval of merger type contribution. Final.
We can do it together. So this is on page twenty-one. We did this, we started here, workshop on Wednesday, I'm just gonna go ahead and knock on the door and see how you guys wanna handle this one. So recommend a motion from staff is to, well, how about some deep, brief background, play back what this is about?
Okay, so what this is basically about is longevity paid, which currently don't have. And it's not a cash payment, basically it's increase on fine contribution side or current pension side we have. It wouldn't get in until after year five. Continue service of the full time and staff members. And so basically to part, you have to participate, there isn't an opt-in or opt-out, so basically if they would boost it up two percentage points year five, you're ten another two year, you might sell for total six. But the employees also have to match that, so it's kind of a pay play routine. Well, the older community I found has longevity based on fine contribution side, which is the pension and there's only three of us out of nine full-time members that even qualify currently have over five year part point currently. So.
Uh, it would, go ahead, yes.
I guess it work, you know, and basically who would have respect, respect myself, city on, Scott Hurd currently. And I just, I'd rather plan tomorrow than put the money in my pocket today. Basically, we'll agree with us also, and I think the city, hopefully, the city council agrees with that kind of thing. So also, anyway, has any other particular questions, Ryan or council or?
Um, just that, it's a retention tool, one, uh, two, the net budget impact is five thousand, around five thousand.
Around five thousand dollars.
Big hit. Um, and I think it covered, I'll be able to do that.
Five thousand as long as employees. Well, there's, and I get it clear from, it's, it's not an opt-in or opt-out, it's kind of, it's kind of a, I mean, it's part of the fine contribution. You have, so, but at this point, if you're in, you're in, it was, it's not flipping back and forth for the staff.
And then we did receive a question, um, literally workshop, about what's a max contribution of boys can make on their own to the retirement.
If I have, you don't have, where the, wherever the council provides in the plan, it's not like 401K, it's not like 457, where you, there's kind of fine contribution plan, wherever, whatever is defined in this plan, council has the, it's at their leisure to change it at any time. So basically, you have, there's one set of rules, it's not a, where, let's say that I want ten percent sales, let's say four percent. This, wherever, however, I ever have the plan document, spread that out, we'll be able to follow for the travel of the service.
So, sir?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution two, one service, I think six, that may amend the value contribution by first.
Second.
So we have motion by Truster, second, by Leo, improve the fine contribution longevity, case for employee protection. As presented. Neil, comments, question, council? We, we have all learned as a result of that, that critical, with any key important employees are. And if they're wrong for fired enough, I think they're pretty much on that to classify as, as key employees. Statement, so if there's no further questions? Do you need a small call for this? Yes, okay, so I was the first of all.
Truster?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes, motion passing.
Next order of business is review of rule of sidewalk sales in specials of August, Thursday, August nineteen. Greaters in the audience, great, do you think you want to add or do you want some discipline? Council having a question for Gray.
It's my twelfth year doing sidewalk sale, uh, used to go with Janet Fred and and, but we've been doing it for many years, the permit that I turned, and it's the same permit that I turned this for many, many years. There were some questions online, we have to close up Hopple, we only have a few businesses on Hopple that participate. And if you look at my map, you'll see for easier load traffic, despite how it has to be closed up. Otherwise, we have cars driving into Montler Street with no good turn around. Um, and there were some, about five or six questions that Ryan emailed me and I answered, and so I hope that he turns those back on you. Having a new clerk, as well as a new manager, again, couple new work members here, Nita. And a lot of folks are used to the events where I've been used to working in the same group for many years. So if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Yes, there was a question Wednesday, workshop about Right, um, and my concern being that if you have hopple canyon and then you have the trench and literally, perhaps because I'm not able for emergency vehicle to get through. I think that was answered by the fact that there're only a lot of go ten feet off the curb.
That's right, all merchants, when they sign their application, know that they can only go ten feet into the street. And per, um, per what we've done over the years, Brad Jay, that retired chief or something from the fire department, takes a walk through about nine o'clock, nine thirty in the morning before we open up uh, to make sure that there's that clearance through the middle aisle to allow emergency vehicles to get through. As far as emergency access, again, in the pen for in and out of the uh, the dining areas, well, the dining areas are all closed down, except for the one entry where the whereas all of our tents have all opened, so they're all four sides, they're ten foot hopple tents. And then also we'll see the pay the rental company comes with twenty item that they're trying to log on to the street. So we should have plenty of clearance over the years, it is a bit of a, I don't anticipate it to be much bigger than usually, because usually it's a bit of that. Um, and over the years, we have to like see public restaurants, get our restaurants without the need to get extra supportive items, items that's important as well. Um, the restaurants have served well, we've never had complaints about restaurants or had enough restaurants. And we've seen a part of them in the year that I've.
Yeah, that was one of my other questions, the portlets, because this year is a little different than years past. My first year here, so I had no idea about sidewalk sales, um, but given our limited staff and the number of tourists, you know, we're looking at flexing in outside services, including portlets, we've got a lot of compliments. I know it's a, it's a big deal, um, to be able to go to the restroom. We got a lot of compliments, um, before July best because of the number of portlets that we had out there. Uh, so it's a question, I have no idea whether existing facilities are at it or not, uh, but that question's still out there.
I would keep my toilet brush can, since I will go in there and I will certainly go.
Right, uh, and then, you know, the motion is contingent upon approval by emergency services, if you got these, so Scott. If you got these, so Scott, if there's any other slides, you know, we still have some, some dialogue to do.
Motion to approve the special application council that about to go being the sidewalk sales event in downtown Sautauq City on August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Approval contingent upon approval by emergency services and.
Good, we'll stand, carry my, Leo, approve the motion on sidewalk sales, special amendment, any other questions or comments? If not, all of them, they're voting say yes.
Yes.
Both, none of the votes, so carry unanimously.
Would like to thank the city for giving us the park produced in the park, we just have to be very good here. And thank you for our city staff that is, that has been diligent in getting the garbage cans out and taking the streets of park that was great for us. And even in pristine condition, we go through, we comb that park every night to make sure it's super clean for those guys who went after the park.
You chose, and you chose. Said volunteer in the middle of life. Thanks. Uh, next, uh, business approval of special vet. Permit for a neighborhood black party on Spirit Street between uh. Butler and.
This is age fifty-five, you're a gentleman, um, discussing Wednesday workshop.
Motion.
And I'll make a motion to approve special dedication from rest carers, both in the Spirit Street block party event in Sautauq City on. August fourteen, twenty twenty-one, approval contingent upon approval by emergency services and.
No motion by Leo, second by Lewis, approve the request for the neighborhood block party on Spirit Street scheduled for uh. It was Saturday, August fourteen. Any other questions or comments? None of all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Both, not both, so carry. Next item regarding the business, Mount Ballhead Challenge, special event. Formal. Mr. Sullivan.
Hello, everybody, I'm Jim Sullivan, I live on uh, in the township on Richwood Drive, um, pleasure to be here today. Uh, couple things, uh, board of directors asking to say just at the outset, that we have a longstanding trusted relationship with you all. Uh, back in that Mount Ballhead Challenge, uh, open, done and cleaned up uh each year since twenty twelve. I've wrote it, we've run over, the last three years or the last two years, and this year have been interesting because uh. Twenty nineteen, it was successful uh than ever, five hundred and fifty runners and cleared seventy-five thousand dollars in proceeds and donations. Um, uh, we were honored to roll and COVID hit and delayed twenty-first time uh with the Mount Ballhead Challenge to uh this year. Um, despite that, uh, the team that was working on all the challenge managed to scrape in twenty thousand dollars uh of net profits last year just by doing some promotion. Even a lot of people, um, so I have some great news, uh, we are able to make the entire budget uh for the first year of the first spot in the Sautauq uh public schools. As for all of this, one of those uh, support of that school's on program. And back uh, from years ago, when we said we were gonna do that, we never realized how important they'd be because post-COVID keeps you crazy. And we're in a crazy season now uh with these programs, so uh, Tintin Travis is delighted and high in tune because we were hoping we could get fifty kids. Involved in that program in the first year, and a hundred and fifty-five are registered for summer programs, uh, okay. So we are setting up a big launch in the fall, uh, and hopefully we'll have a very successful program on August fifteenth. Now we have a hundred thousand dollars to raise this year and another hundred thousand dollars next year. Um, that's the background context for uh the entire event. Uh, as you know, we hold the Mount Ballhead Challenge the second, uh, Saturday after Labor Day of the year. And in a, I guess a coincidence where the date found us this year, that happens to be twenty twenty-two, the nine eleven tax. Black people race without some marking of that, so we are planning rather solemn, um, the, the banner ceremony, beginning of the race. To mark the hour uh of the first attack and send the runners off between the families of fire, EMT, police and military veterans. On the side of the start, so we're gonna be doing some, to mark that date on Saturday. But coming back to fireworks, which is the, I don't know, uh, in front of them. Uh, we had worked with city uh, folks who both Douglas said in Sautauq this spring and uh. You know, COVID was holding everybody up and we decided based on the guidance of the Latin cities, not to do the July fourth uh event and maybe do a Labor Day event. So we were getting our act together on that and we were pushed by Kristen at the uh, SCA and Lisa at the CDB. And they suggested Friday nights, uh, after Labor Day, would be a good time to mark the beginning of post-summer season. On uh power season, trouble season, and try to do maybe an annual event uh, uh, each year at Labor Day or um, that first weekend. That coincides with uh, perfect excuse to honor workers of all strikes who run into emergencies and, and face and include pandemics. And so the theme of this year's Friday night celebration is to salute the heroes that helped us whenever there's need uh to be helpful. Um, so we're doing some new things this year, uh, we had uh been delayed in, in fireworks events, uh, probably because we weren't sure when and where. Uh, we are now to the Friday nights, uh, at dusk, after a concert at the SCA, uh, we let out, um, uh, actually it's an outdoor concert and. Uh, fifteen minutes later, we'll, we'll uh have a show go, that would be around eight thirty that evening based on sunset. And it's the same vendors we've used to do fireworks and pass uh night magic and the budget board is fifteen thousand dollars for the post-implication there. Uh, we've got a rotating grant and we think you can make uh, make the number, we are asking each new dismounts for fifteen hundred dollars to sort of. Uh, and offset some of our costs because all the profits were used. Uh, I'm here to take questions, uh, the, the, the patient that submitted. Uh, you have one of their asks on Mount Ballhead Challenge, we're gonna make a slight, a slight alteration to the route based on a private property owner. Uh, wishing we could not run five hundred people across the property, even though it's unoccupied. Um, we're not having this sorry, no, the menu, so um, we look at the Fishtown Trail, we look as a very good alternative for it. There are some um, uh, down trees, tree lifts that we want to work with EPW volunteer, uh, with man-made chainsaws to move those trees properly. Other than that, it's a, I think it's a well-used trail, it's a perfect, lose exact, exact same there um, for the runners, new, new futures this year. So those are really the three things I'm asking for is the alteration or amendment of the earlier application, uh, as per that route. Um, fireworks commission and uh, fifteen hundred bucks.
Any personal case, any questions for, for Jim regarding the challenge?
Mr. Mayor. I approve the motion to approve the uh special event application for. Now, all of the challenges, the event in Sautauq City, except for around twenty twenty-one, approval contingent upon approval by emergency services and.
Oh, second, okay, so a motion by Peterson, second by Truster, approve the Mount Wallhead Challenge, uh, slide division. Questions, question? Oh, Lauren, please.
Um, do you want to add that the city W has fifteen hundred dollars to that or?
That was a good, my question, uh, it just encompasses that, I mean, for order we need even to have a, a, an action that helps us to move that through.
No, I think that's something you have in your budget, um, Jim and I discussed this item and I think our. It's in the budget, I think the contribution, if police forces needed, I think that's where it's gonna go. Uh, can't come into the fireworks, specific state stations, well, from a law matter, uh, only a law for certain dates, so. In the budget, I don't think we need to actually.
Okay, very, one more question. Let me discuss previously, but we'll reach, somebody opened in line for uh, for the parents that aren't participating.
Sure, answer is yes, uh, we're gonna fly off the south uh lane for the runners, it seems to have done out to the.
Okay, um, it'd be great if, um, we're ready to use communication, should we, the local athletes, um, to try to carpool and perhaps like grab opportunities for, perhaps in the early. Uh, just to say that's gonna be a lot of traffic for the rest of this.
We uh, uh, are actually in communication with all runners right now about uh, hitting here early, carpooling. For captain, we're aiming for five hundred, uh, that'll allow to carpooling, everybody may get into uh, Little Beach and uh. Parking the northern lots, keeping the southern lot open for uh, more users and uh. Uh, following through on all of your requirements from the. We are, I will mention, the, the, the protocols as they're basically stated, and everyone has to uh certify that they've been vaccinated or have the test.
Any other questions? None of all those in favor, motion, say yes.
Yes.
Both, not both, so carry, second. Okay, we're gonna the next item. Regarding the uh, new ordinances, proposed ordinances. And general regulations. Certainly. Floating homes.
Something else, oh, and then starting first, there's a push to.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yeah, that, this, which is.
All of Peterson's question, what's the question for yourself, the discussion in ordinance, or these amendments or, or ordinances? We'll call over the.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Becken? Dean?
Yes.
Peterson, you? Sandy?
Mr. Mayor, I'll turn this over to the city, um, but just, uh, we are with the council, so if you have any questions. You want to say, uh, for this point, uh, please do not hesitate to ask, uh, Cindy, can you decide on the basis for?
Sure, thank you, um, at our last planning meeting, we discussed thoroughly both parts, both ordinances, one is zoning ordinance amendment. Uh, that define floating homes and define whole service marinas. And limited floating homes to whole service marinas in the neighborhood of Green Zone District. Quite small number of floating homes that could be inherited. We also required in zoning ordinance that there be two parking spaces, her floating home. And the um, planning commission recommended that council adopt this legislation. For the zoning ordinance, there's a second part, we can do it together or we can do it separately.
And I think our um, advice to council was the end of the Saturday.
Yeah, sure, so uh. Let's open up for the discussion regarding the uh zoning ordinance amendment. Question from the other. We had a pretty thorough discussion on this one today. And so, some of the discussion, as I recall it. This rule is a added level of protection or control, I guess, regarding. Structure, is a, you know, and uh. It was looked at by prior city uh, legal council and new city legal council. And we were trying to get at it. But what I've done is, the council's done it after. Okay, all right, thank you, so it is important to be in the record. Uh, any further questions regarding this?
Yes, I'm here having to approve those zoning ordinance amendments sections one five four point zero zero five, one five four point zero three two. One five four point one three five, chapter one fifty-four, section fifteen, type fifteen of the code of the city of Sautauq entitled land usage zoning ordinance.
So a motion by, it was seconded by Peterson, approve the uh, motion as we done. The chairs and ordinances are fluid in nature, uh, they can be revised and changed as things progress or needs are presented. And although this may initially not be, be perfect. Document of, it, it's, I think, in my mind, a, a, a very, very good start and uh. If the ten, you're not, council?
Yeah, I, I believe we can solve about the definition with what I, there didn't a lot of awful people seeing uh, an action like this. But it seems like when we look at, I guess, page seven and six, uh. If the volume of floating homes is over twenty-five feet long, uh, over fifteen feet in height. Uh, cannot readily be developed in a large stadium, it's fifty miles per hour, well, that's sort of the definition of sale. So I, I'm not, you know, I, I just want to make sure we finally imagine it to be uh solid enough to, to, to. For the whole people.
Cindy, is that?
Sure, thank you, the way I understand this section feels when there is a houseboat that's claimed to be a houseboat. But really it's a floating home, these are some considerations that we consider making that determination which item it is. And it doesn't say, the definition of a floating home shallow for the houseboat, it says pan for the houseboat. So I'm pretty comfortable with thinking that determination of somebody who tells me, well, this is not a floating home, it's a houseboat. That we have some legitimate standards to meet, of the houseboat, not a floating home.
No, that's, that's consistent with my understanding of the description is that these um, characteristics here uh are possible ways to identify something that might be a floating home. But it's not the same, you know, anything that's under the condition of being outside of. This of, of thing, and characteristics factors that can be determined uh in a certain way, or if something's floating or. And the sailboat could be good on a listy look, um, that kind of the time and intent uh and the use of that.
I mean, I, I know we're trying to get, I just want to make sure we get the question.
Any other questions regarding the motion? Okay, uh, heard this call, roll on motion.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson? Second?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Item fourteen B, uh, did your motion for refusal, considerable?
I have it.
Okay, uh, item fourteen B, uh. Edition in chapter ninety-nine title. Nine.
Okay, similar to the first um, terms of the floating homes, the planning commission did review this section. To make sure that it matched with the zoning ordinance, that it was not conflicting with zoning ordinance in any way. And this is a regulatory ordinance, not per zoning ordinance. There's a pool of differences between zoning ordinance and regulatory ordinance. One is someone wants to appeal a, a decision on uh zoning ordinance, they go. One is someone wants to appeal a decision on zoning ordinance, they go to the zoning board to appeal. If someone wants to appeal a decision on a regulatory ordinance, they would make that appeal to the city council, now, or for zoning ordinance. And I can just hit on some of the highlights. The findings are to document why the city thinks floating homes need to be regulated and not just unregulated. The purpose is to set the safeguards for the construction and installation of floating homes. And to set up the licensing process for floating homes. There's again some definitions that match the zoning ordinance. And makes the city manager or is it for that to be enforcement officer or the licensing program. The licenses are set up to license each floating home in a way. And they do have to follow all the regulations in this set of regulations. There's not discretion for the city manager or the enforcement officer to deviate from those standards. And that includes zoning requirements, electric, gardeners, gas, and that type of thing. Then there's the list of standards. And the miscellaneous matters relate to. Relate to the permits required for the place that they don't believe. Whether or not they can be used for short-term rentals or not, I think that should be up to the full service marine, marine that they're installed. Those are business decisions of the marine, not necessarily regulation. And. If we move from floating home from one area to another, it still has to meet all those same standards, not changing anything. And they got insurance and the overwater mooring. The use of the dock, you know, the marine can control their business decisions, spread it in, put that in a license. And close the gap between the zoning expiration date and the filing effective date of the sentence.
I think we had a question that I had to answer. Here, thank you. The planning commission, commission spent about seven and a half hours on this. Now, for people who are listening in, seems like a kind of fresh, through this without a lot of discussion. The planning commission spent two and a half hours, I don't know how long you spent with the attorney, I don't know how long Cindy spent the week. And then we got a meeting, our city council meeting, over an hour on that. So we've gone through this to a great extent. The, the city council can move on their regulatory orders, doesn't have to turn to the planning commission to move on our own. But the planning commission did have several things they wanted to emphasize. First was that the marine had, they had a permit that allowed them to have a floating home. The second one was that the houseboat, the floating home had to be licensed day one before it could go in. And the marine had, full service marine operator had to have that license in hand before they left.
Questions first? So this does create a path for compliance of some of the existing floating homes. So this thirty hour out, current compliance usuals. But as a follow-up to that path, I think it's important to follow up and understand what limited areas is going to go with it. When we talk about the neighborhood marine districts and there's really only three of them in the city currently, and Cindy, you want to share with us what we've got?
That would be Southern Yacht Club, yacht services, and the Southern operation. And those are all the only neighborhood marine districts that have full service marinas.
That meet the definition of our neighborhood marine zoning district. So that clears up all the power could be anywhere that's really not even attached.
Mrs. Mayor, one more step, and it's a special one you should probably have to go through with the planning.
That's back to this forty. And then I'd said in the very brief, thorough meeting, and I, having come from planning, I really appreciated how thorough that group was. Even though it was a long, but it was very thoughtful and thorough discussion. And I really appreciate spending the time for that. So, and I move to chapter ninety-nine, title nine, go with the city stock.
Okay, we have a motion by, I will second by Peterson, to prove the motion regarding general regulations that's presented. Further questions? Ask by council? If not, clerk, please call the roll of motion.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Trustor?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. She carried a handoff. Cindy? Many other dates involving when this ordinance goes into effect. Or action taken by the council, kind of fair enough to be the interest of.
There's no action required by council. The clerk does have to publish the ordinance or summary of ordinance in the paper. And the ordinance will take about seven days after that publication. So we anticipate that the August fifteenth and the moratorium expires on August twenty-third.
Good, thank you for that, patients. Then moving on, hopefully we can take in further action to, 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 to. Both members. This time is. There will. Change the motion to go into session. Our. Can we move both our section, we voted on this. Die. I will hand off with that. But I will get off anyway, we should press pass for any topic this evening before we open over the session then.
Well, I'll get off again. I see a shoreline arc of figures from our eleven. Would save us any confusion. Anybody else want to jump in?
Again, I brought the main council, this has been a very long, drawn-out procedure. I did also listen in to the planning meeting. And it was, it was almost painful to me to have to listen to it because they were just, they were right, just listening, thinking, talking. It was amazing. I'd like to say it's, I'm really proud of my city. And I think democracy works. With that, I will stumble down the stairs. Anyone else want to go?
Okay, anybody else for the council? Or? Uh, maybe someone. Yeah, we'll get a motion to go into session then, then we'll discuss. Agreed, that's how we're going to move. Yeah, I think we need to read that whole chair. Peterson? We all was.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
I.
Uh, yes.
Peterson? Dean?
We're.
Dean?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yes, Leo, yes.
Any fingers?
Oh, fingers.
Okay, so we're, we're back in that position, open session. Uh, with the executive name, uh, they need actions on the item, discussion, or session. We have a motion regarding.
Sure. Discussion.
So I move to grant the appeal in part with respect to the hourly rate. And direct the city clerk to send a letter in response. I would leave that by your, 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 your remainder of the FOIA coordinator's decision. And uphold the remainder of. FOIA, what? Of the FOIA coordinator's determination. And uphold the remainder of the FOIA coordinator's determination.
Okay. That we did it.
I say we can get that going one more time.
All right, so sorry. Move, it's all good, move to grant the appeal in part with respect to the hourly rate. And direct the city clerk to send a letter in response and uphold the remainder of the FOIA coordinator's determination.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, roll with it.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Becken?
Justin.
Trustor?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
She carried a handoff, lady. Quick question. Sorry. Did we turn that back on the desk?
Yeah.
Hold it. So now we have a motion on second FOIA appeal.
All right. Move to grant the appeal in part with respect to that portion that was disclosed in the commercial records. And so uphold the FOIA coordinator's determination with the remainder exempt due to client privilege. Got that one?
Second, all right. Good morning, by Louis, second by Trustor. And we very much. So, roll call, roll with it.
Start?
Sure.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Trustor?
Becken?
Yes.
There is no point between none. The petition with the floating home. For the record, I don't know anybody else, no, but those thirty-five and eight are all petitions, this is the one, sorry.
Yes.
Probably.
There we go.
Yeah. And we did a little. Sorry, we can all come up with different opinions that you're allowed to be bringing up and signing. We're just, we're finding, citing something that's a floating home. And it was, it just originally started originating back in April. And for a lot of, I have a lot of. Return so. Uh. Information. Okay, before we adjourn, council members. Go right around the table, let's, let's start. Do the same, start on the floor.
I'm excited.
This would be just a committee report for planning condition, if you heard enough of it, it's going to be very hard. The data files.
All right, just a quick, I sent the summary of the question, the cycle committee, the date, and the second back from the first. Basically, we're just sparing the grant. So this doesn't, doesn't hold this in any, this possibly won't, we're just, that's why.
Okay, all right.
Uh, non-mortarized child committee, we have a meeting, that's Friday, we'll be looking at workings, connect drawings from C two A D, the county, and fire department at R C P. Really, we're looking at design. And we have scheduled a public open house for, it's going to be five, it's the twenty-fourth, from four to six. That's very important, because we need to show in fact that we are talking to the community. So, more so.
Unfortunately, on the harbor authority, the township is strong, we plan, we agreed to drive the harbor authority somewhere now, united, you know, cause. On the week, our next application is for, for, you know, they're raising that. And on the, uh, the floating home front, I don't know, it's the same exact, see what happened. Okay, we had a quick K L A meeting, our manager was on a long awaited vacation, so all he did, he was pretty. Talk about some of the, um, pretty significant issues, so.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Is that Maxi more about the quick K L A meeting?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know if I'm going to get this very. But I'm sitting waiting, yeah, so this, and it's a heads up, and more will come from Ryan, but since I'm ahead and on it. This is a potential significant, uh, sewer issue on Butler, uh, along the. Primarily, it's the stores, the Alamoa store, and here's one of this. Uh, do, and I kind of got about attention for Cindy one day when there was a hole in the street trying to repair it, and Cindy and Ryan were asleep. Anyway, uh, there's something for the sewer lines, actually go behind your buildings. They could turn to the south, runs through the alley between Wally's and Land Sharks. And, well, actually, right now, it's a dead ending, too, they're not even dead, running until they manhole. Because as the activation determined that the line was destroyed, the old clay diaphragm, line that eventually ran underneath Hoffman Street. And hooked up along, uh, some kind of ground. They couldn't repair it when they opened up because you can't put a bigger wall into a small thing, a little bit. So now, and Maxi's on the issue, and it was a, remember when Wally's out down there, and the garbage, and right in the street, let's, couldn't put that in. Then because they had this ground covered, so it's, they, so the bottom line is that Maxi, this abandoned rig, are looking at it from several different angles, but the. So, the bottom line is that Max, at least abandoned, are looking at it from several different angles, but the. One of them would be quite costly, would be to put a spur line. Hoffman and Butler, south to about, uh, Santa Fe area, and pick up those properties. Certainly unsure where some of those sewer lines go, because that's what's happening in our downtown. But there may be a lesser solution, but just wanted to allow everybody to know on that, just to be. And it's got to be done just because they're going down, they have to come up this, it was been three, up off downward. They have to go down the second thing, all this amount of land, land charts. Uh, and obviously, Wally's, I'm really sorry about that. They have their own separate line put in, Land Sharks is put, they're separate one. Okay, so, but it's kind of unknown what some of those other concrete is for, but was figured out. So, it's just time to look at that whole half a block, and a few years back, we did a, a city or similar project. South, or on the south side, I don't remember the store, I think Bob's Cars, June Brandon's place. And, and that's some of the, uh, those issues, and even those other units, maybe the dogs, the stars, they got an east side. Maybe they have to hook up, they'll put stones in along, and it's, um, just, um, they are, work on.
Perhaps, um, perhaps not to be, you know, that, and the structure, right, for all, so, you know, for the sake, uh, with, how the best is most recent, I don't think. Work for the structure, right?
Yes, this one is gonna be nice, you know, for a small.
Short, short, please.
Yeah, it's up to the, no one says, like, it's, we have to, you know, so, I don't know, we also want to stand some. Now, we're two week long, not, you know. But, and I don't think anybody there, well, Fred, I think you had, Fred Moore, Fred Moore, so, going down there. Yeah, he's got, he knows, probably. Fortunately, oh, they have, yeah. I don't know, your attention. I love you, Jerry. I have a tour session, see you. The last. I think so, I think I've wrestled off this, I want to, um, make sure, you know, quick step, you know, all right, good. Yeah, I feel good, I'm in the face, you good? What's that? Everything good over here? Be a place council. Um, thanks, you're, yeah, it's.